...town, which is an added benefit if this sewer line is run out there. We also have the capability of adding citizens on the west side of town. So we get a side benefit besides just running a water line, a sewer line to the hospital. Correct?
Well, the million five, if you'll remember, was the red line only, which only included running it out to the hospital. Then there would be another, about a million two or so, or a million three, if you were going to connect other people in on that.
Right. Well, we knew at this time we wouldn't be able to do that.
Right.
So my question is, at a million five, adding to the bonds, knowing that we would probably start that line, by then the hospital would have probably already started construction, based on the fact if we say, yes, we're going to run a sewer line or not, then the hospital has to step up and start working on it. Can we afford to make those payments?
Well, we are making the payments currently, but as you know, we've discussed before, we're not in compliance with the bond covenants.
Right.
And we're working, and council has been made aware of this and everything, that we're working on trying to get that where we can make the bond, you know, meet the bond covenants. And the bond covenant currently is that we have 1.2, 120% of our payment in net revenue from the water sewer. And we were down in 2011 below that. For 2012, it's probably gotten somewhat worse. And in 2013, it would appear at this time that, you know, we're going to be even in worse position from the cash standpoint. Now, we have made all the bond payments. Don't misunderstand me. It's the bond covenant that we have not been in compliance with.
Uh, Lonny. Okay, we're not, we may not be in compliance, however, like you said, we've not missed a payment. And, you know, if the bond company says, gives us a green light that we're capable of doing it, something like this, apparently, they're comfortable with it, right?
Uh...
Bond covenants, I mean, that's their responsibility. So, I mean, if they're comfortable with it, then apparently it would be...
I, I can't...
We're a city, and we're going to continue to grow. I hope that we continue to grow, and so we're always going to be in debt.
I don't think there's any question about that, you know, about the indebtedness of the city. I'm, I don't know whether the, I don't know whether they're comfortable with it or not.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, he hasn't, he hasn't given the green light to say, hey, that, yeah, this is, this is the kind of thing that, yeah, we'd do this. But if they should, then apparently they are. Wouldn't that be your estimation?
That would be my, my assumption, yes, that if, if they gave the green light. However, we have to, the bond covenants brings in, of course, the Securities and Exchange Commission, which it's not totally up to the bond underwriter, you know, and so there's maybe some restrictions there that I'm not aware of.
The point is that the bonding company has a clause in their contract that says we must come up with 120% of the payment, and if we don't have it in cash, we have to raise our water rates until we meet that. So they're home free. If we don't raise the water rates, they come in and do it for us, which is what I understand from our water workshops that we have had. And the point is that now we are not quite pulling in the revenue that we need to make the bond payments now. We're trying everything we can to improve our situation by changing out the meters and measuring the water and doing everything we can to try to bring, to cut down our losses before the water even hits the meter. But what was pretty clear in this workshop that we had, this meeting we had with them, and you made an absolutely brilliant point, that there is no way of guaranteeing that the hospital is going to be built. We could go ahead and put in this water, this sewer line, and they could decide not to build a hospital, and we don't get paid back for it, and there's no way that our expenses are covered. So we, we are just kind of, we don't have a very good bargaining position now. We need much better terms and a much better bargaining position to even consider this because before, we have looked at putting a sewer line out there and have realized that we're not going to take in enough revenue from the number of people that live on that line if all of them connect, and they would have to pay for connecting because this doesn't include running water sewer lines back like to the Hayes, Hayes Street or something. They have to pay for that to connect, and only the people on that side of the highway will be able to connect. The people on the other side won't be able to because they won't be able to afford it because they're going to have to dig up across Highway 62 to connect to the sewer line. So the people that think that if we go ahead and do this, they're going to get sewage, they're going to be sewered in that area, that's not true. They're not necessarily going to have sewer, so there are a lot of negative things to this. I don't think our bargaining position is at point now where we can consider this.
Um, contract of financial responsibility is what we've already told the hospitals that they would have to do. So if we go to the expense of building and they change their mind, they've got to pay us back.
Well, provided we can get them to do that.
Yeah, well, and they've already said they would, but second thing I wanted to say was, okay, Lonny, you said this, what was the figure, a million five was to run a sewer line strictly out to that end, but not any hook up?
On that, on that map that we got at the workshop?
Right.
And this million five, and this was a notation that the mayor made at that time, and this is my understanding, a million five was the first, if you remember, from the McClellan Engineers, they had it originally at 922,000 for this, just the red line, and then if you were adding these other things and hooking up the other areas and so on, it would be down here at 2.239 million.
Okay, 'cause for...
So, and right here, this was just with a red line on it.
Right.
From what I understood, that was just the line essentially from Pivot Rock out to the property.
Right.
Now, but my understanding was, as long as we run this line here, all these people over here that we've been promising for 50 freaking years to get them hooked up, once this line is installed, we can hook them up to sewer.
Yeah. Not without running the lines?
No, provide, they have to build a line.
Okay, they, the homeowners, this is where I'm getting lost, they, the homeowners, would have to run, run their own private sewer line to here?
No, we would have, correct me if I'm wrong, we ask for a base amount strictly from the connection at Pivot Rock Road to the property, not to the, not to the hospital, but to the edge of the property where the hospital has to come to and hook up. No peripheral lines whatsoever. Doesn't count Dogwood Ridge, doesn't count Woodridge, doesn't count any of the ones back this side if you're going to try to hook up Hayes. It's just a line to the property.
But how do you hook up private property lines to it? And there's, I'm saying is, do you put in a pipe like this, or do you put in a pipe that's got a doodad that they could hook up to? That's basically my question.
We have to run the lines.
Right.
Okay. So we run the main line. If we take off into a housing addition...
No, I don't mean that. Do we run a single tube?
No, we have to...
Or do we have a tube that has attachments for future?
It's a plumbing question, which is basically, we run a solid line. If in the future somebody needs to hook up, they just punch a hole in, in the dented end.
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
They don't, they don't run to our line. They'll run to the line we run out to the addition or to the property. We have to have a line that comes off of our line to supply to Dogwood Ridge.
Okay, well, part of, part of why I'm asking this is because we're talking about spending a lot of money to run a sewer line out to the end of the highway because the hospital has asked us to, and yet we've had people out there for 50 years that we promised we would put these lines out there. They have paid for the hookups. So how can we sit there and say, fine hospital, you asked, here you go, and screw our people?
Okay.
If we can't do both, why are we doing?
If you look on the last page from McClellan...
It's called money.
On the last page, McClellan.
Okay.
You asked for the red line only, and it was the nine, nine...
I don't have the second page.
Thousand, or 922,000, 923,000, okay.
Let's call it a million.
Yeah, another million, two, three, is what the additional lines would cost for the green, yellow, and cyan light blue areas. Those are the other lines. That's on top of the other, what was it, one?
It's an addition to everything.
Uh, 3,000, 3,923,000, so you're looking at almost six mil.
Two. Okay, so this is what we're saying, is we can afford to do one, we can't afford to do all, so we'll do the one, and maybe in another 50 years, we'll get to the rest of, of the rest?
That's about it.
Mr. Mitchell.
The question that was before us was the count, the hospital came to us and said, we have found some land to build this hospital. I'm still surprised economically and financially why they're going to spend 15 or 20 million dollars to build a hospital here anyway. It's very sketchy to me, but whatever. That's their business because guess what? We're not on the hook for that part of the money. They're the ones going to have to generate it, and private industry should take over and build any healthcare facility that the city has, and the city should stay far away from the healthcare business, there is no doubt. But they came and asked us to put a sewer line to that property, and that was the question before us, and that's what we allocated 5,000, whatever we did, money to find this out. And a side benefit, if the line's there and they punch holes in it later, would be great for the citizens, but that's not what we were discussing. We were discussing the, the hospital's request. Communities have a tremendous emotional investment in their healthcare facilities. Tremendous. That's why the government jumped in with critical access hospitals and then even started making changes. Instead of being 15 miles apart, they've got a lot of critical care access hospitals in the United States that are less than 10 miles apart because they didn't want to close a community's hospital down because of that emotional investment. We do have a healthcare facility that's, from our hospital, 14.3 miles, and we do have excellent first responder through our EMS and the capabilities of lifeflighting people out. So we do have access to healthcare here, but we have the potential of eventually the current hospital closing. Allegiance's contract has eight more years on the extensions they had from the original five years, because I looked it up on the, on the actual contract. So if they could keep that old building functioning and going, they might could last another eight years. It's very questionable. And milk it for everything it's worth and then disappear. That's quite, that's quite obvious. I'm still not too sure that if we call their bluff and put the line out there, that it's really going to materialize. It would be interesting, and I would wish it would, but it's, it's going to be interesting.
You should be.
Well, we won't be putting a line out unless we have a contract with Allegiance. Basically, what everybody's said is that if for some reason they default, then they pay for the line. I too have questions about this. We've been down this road. This is the second time in the last 15 years we've had a company promise to build us a hospital, and we're still, you know, talking about building a hospital. Right now, we're scrambling trying to find revenue to just put the line out there, and that's a lot of juggling on our part. To even consider hooking up residents at this point in time can't be part of this discussion. But the fact that there is a line, based on Allegiance building the hospital, in the future, it'll be a lot better. People are on septic tanks right now. I understand the impact to groundwater and all of that, but I'll tell you what, if you took a poll of people in that neighborhood and said, hey, we're going to have a hospital a half a block away from you, and it might be a little while longer before you get hooked onto sewer, I'll guarantee you, they're going to be tickled to death to have the hospital. So let's, I, I don't think we should even be discussing this at this point. We're trying to scrape every bit of money we can to potentially put a line out to the hospital. That should be the total discussion we have here. It'll be everything we can do to do that, but it has to be based on the contract between Allegiance and the Sadeev Eureka Springs.
Mr. McClellan.
Yeah, and Mr. Hunt, uh, he, he put it right the other day at the meeting, was that, he said, hey, he said, you know, you make them build, and then you put the line in. That's what, and that was how we left it. So, you know, as long as they, you know, they're building it and it's under construction, they, the engineer, the architect, all they, they said was, you know, that, you know, wait and build the line so it can be tied in at the end of the project.
And they haven't even started designing.
Of course not.
Yeah.
But that's, they're not there yet. But, you know, we need to have an ordinance saying that we're willing to do this. And the reason that the mayor correctly chose a number of 1.5 million instead of the, the 1 million they're talking about, because I even recommended 1.2, is because it may not be a year and a half, two years away before the actual line would be constructed. So things go up. We know that. So, I mean, that's, that's the thing we do, is we, we do an ordinance to, to, to put in the line upon their execution of a contract and, and then, and then, you know, percentage of the work done, I'm not exactly sure how that gets worded, but that's what attorneys are for. I'm not one.
Ms. Snodgrass, you're next.
Okay, this may sound like a really dumb comment, but I want you to think about it. Allegiance is a for-profit hospital. They are proposing to spend 15 to 20 million dollars to build a hospital situation that none of us can figure out where they're going to get the people for, but the point is, they're willing to spend 15 to 20 million dollars on a facility, and they can't throw in an additional lousy million for a sewer line? This has not made any sense to me from the beginning. I understand that they want to say, well, the city's got to have some kind of, you know, tie-in. Why? We're going to have the sick people, the injured people, so on and so forth. We're going to have the people hopefully that are working there. Why from 15 to 20 million, they, can't they see their way to 1 million more? Because if they could see their way to that 1 million more, we could then see our way to that extra million or million and a half, whatever it comes down to, to add our people on that we have promised for 50 years. That way, we have a hospital, we have a sewer line, we have our people hooked up. Everybody should be a happy camper. So I don't understand why they're asking us to foot the bill when they've already got supposedly the money for all this other stuff.
Mr. Mitchell.
In all my experience, the city provided utilities to the property line for any construction. Water sewer, whether you're for-profit or nonprofit. The last hospital we just built, Elk City, Oklahoma, 65 million dollars, the city even came in and did the landscaping and fixed the parking lot for us because they wanted the hospital so bad on their dime. So at, at this point, I think it behooves us to ask the city attorney to draft the ordinance based on using some of the wording that Mr. McClellan did, and let's just call Allegiance's hand and see. It's time to fish or cut bait. So I make a motion that the city attorney draft an ordinance allocating 1.5 million dollars to construct a sewer line out to the property line of the hospital after a contract is established with Allegiance detailing their commitment to pay for said line should the city have any expenses and they not build the hospital.
Mr. DeVito? You had your hand up.
Um, I'll second that so that I can be in discussion. The conversation about the city entering into building this line in the future was mostly coming from the bonding agent because the timeline to do all of this, to design the execution of the hospital, his statement was that if we can delay this even late into 2015, that puts us in a better financial position because we've paid off on some of the bonds that we already have. So I, I think that was the primary focus of that discussion, and then I forgot my second thoughts, so I'll just leave it at that.
Yes, sir.
So do we need to, in that ordinance, do we need to put a timeframe that, with the bonds, just to clear that up too?
It would probably be very helpful.
Since you're drafting it, okay?
Do we need to specify they have to build before we'll consider?
Well, yeah, I think I, I thought I covered that.
I think that was part of that?
Yeah, I think it was.
And we won't start digging until they start building?
Mr. McClellan.
I think it's, I think it's very important that we, that we look at, you know, the economic development that something like this does for our community. You know, the, the, you know, the million dollars, most places, most cities will give tax incentives any kind of breaks they can to bring industry to their town. We ain't got nothing. Tourism. And this hospital, I mean, it potentially will employ, employ, I don't know, three, four times as many as it currently does. No?
No. None, sir.
No, sir. No.
Okay.
Because it's the same bed size.
What about that? Rats. But, you know, if more people get sick, maybe they will.
There you go. That's what it is.
If tourism goes up.
Service area.
Maybe the fluoride water.
We've got a motion?
There you go.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I seconded it.
Okay.
And that was my second thought was the impact of better paying jobs in the community and keeping them here in the community because if the new hospital's built, we won't have a hospital in the future, and we'll lose those high-paying jobs.
Okay. My question to Lonny is, not only the 1.5, but there's also those peripheral costs, those ancillary costs, whatever you're calling, that goes with that 1.5. Is the 1.5 going to be enough since they're charging us all these other fees too?
Well, that's, those fees are included in the total bond, in the total of 3,922,679,05. Well, that's the underwriter's fee, which is Stevens of 56,440,000 of attorney fees and...
Take the battery out.
Then that deposit of the debt service reserve fund, that's money that has to be set aside for the CD. And ours that currently is, of course, is, we got a CD, but it's not paying anything to speak of. So, but we wouldn't need, I don't think, to increase it.
So the million five will suffice?
Yeah, but that's going to, that's going to put the total at 3, 3.9 million.
Yeah.
So, with the payoff of our current, our current bond and debt, 2008 and 2010.
Okay. What I want to just make sure of is, is if we do an ordinance for the million five, that these other costs short of the $2,195,000 is also paid for so we don't have to come back again and scramble up some more money?
It's refinancing the other bonds and everything is what, what we're doing.
Exactly.
That does sound like where we're headed, buddy.
Okay.
One more.
Yes?
For the attorney, as you're drafting this ordinance and everything up, will you have a, do we need a cut and run in there, or do we need a timeframe that, that, that they, I mean, think about timeframes and stuff that will really give us control? Please, sir.
I think, with your permission, before I actually give you a draft, I want to talk to your, to the bonding council too.
Absolutely.
Very, because if we commit to something, and these are preliminary, and he then changes his mind, or we get called on by our bonds not being properly, we got problems. So we're going to also have to commit too. And if the hospital says, we're building, touch the ground, and we can't fulfill our part, because from what I heard from our finance director, what he's got is a proposal that's still a little shaky.
Says it's very preliminary.
Very preliminary.
Well, and that's why I mentioned the other day, that we probably should have a pretty, a tight little task force that takes the lead of this, at least Lonny, you, the mayor, and I don't know, Director of Public Works or something, because this, you're lining up a lot of variables here and time-wise before we sign on the dotted line. But I think if, if we can get something to, to show that we have an interest in doing this, we can find out if Allegiance is, is going to, again, produce.
And I mean, somebody needs to, we, we're going to have to talk to Allegiance to see if they're even beginning to be willing to cover us if they pull out.
No, no. That's not, that's not what we're saying. That, we're not asking for that. I mean, it's, no, that's...
A financial thing, yes.
No, no, because what, if they're going to get in there and, and spend the money ahead of us before we put the water or the sewer line in, then they're committed already. I mean, they've got, they've got the structure up. That's what I'm talking about.
No, no, no.
That's not what I heard from them, though. That's shaky. Now, that is shaky. I mean, I see what he's saying, but the way the bond issue said that they'd probably be in construction before we even started running the line there.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Absolutely, absolutely. But what, what we said here, though, was that we still wanted assurances from them if they didn't build, which is kind of a moot point. I don't know what.
And then if they got the thing three quarters built, and you can start putting...
And they went bankrupt.
And we're screwed.
And we have an unfinished hospital.
Okay, I want to make sure that this, just for my, my clarity, since I'll probably be on this little task force thing, and you said, the ordinance that you're, they're asking the city attorney to draft is just to appropriate the 1.5, not to include a contract because a contract can't be in the ordinance. It has to be a separate entity unto itself, which they're not obligated to sign, but there again, that's a whole nother issue. So all you're doing now is just drafting an ordinance to get the 1.5?
To get, to get started.
Okay.
Just to, yeah.
So, you know, I mean, we all think that this is a good thing if it can come together. Well, we got to put our best foot forward and get started. So let's get started.
Ms. Snodgrass, do you have a comment?
Um, I don't know if it would be part of the ordinance or just part of the agreement of the table. I personally do not want to live in this town without a hospital. That's how firmly I believe we need one. But I also firmly believe that just because they start construction doesn't mean they'll finish. I think we need to have a, and they were very amendable when we were there that day. They were very amendable to, yes, there would be a contract, and yes, there would be a financial responsibility contract, and they had no problem, and I don't see that this should be a problem. If they have a problem agreeing to a contract, and I have a problem agreeing to this because I wouldn't trust them. I mean, it would be that simple. So I don't see that it should be a problem that they would care, okay, so they signed a contract saying, yeah, we're going to build. That's what their plan is. Shouldn't have a problem. So, anyway.
Not necessarily. You could do it with tankers.
I can't believe they've done their homework on this.
Important comment by the bonding company as we were leaving in the last meeting.
I can't believe they've done their homework on this.
In the years that he has been issuing water sewer bonds, municipal bonds, he has never seen one to where a sewer line was run to a place where no building existed.
We're not going to do that.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. So that's from the company. So they're, they're aware that this could or could not happen.
So basically, our ordinance needs to say pending their building depends on, I mean, we will agree... mean, we will agree to the sewer line if you build. Is that what we're saying?
Okay. Good question.
Mr. Mitchell, when you were saying what you wanted this, when you were stating your motion, how about, I have a gap here that you can help me fill in that may answer Ms. Snyder's question, to ask the city attorney to draft an ordinance to allocate 1.5 million dollars to construct a sewer line after the contract is drawn up detailing their commitment to.
Build.
A hub facility. Build a facility, the facility. Keep going, please. Did you want a timeline in there? You mentioned.
No.
Okay, so X the timeline.
There may be one, we don't know what that is yet.
That could be in the contract.
It was a really extended, it was, I'm trying to clean it up to make it sound better. No, that's okay. I just wanted to have.
Do you need to say something?
I wanted to have the bones in there so as to satisfy.
Is that necessary?
To get it started, Mr. Attorney. Help, you're gonna have to help.
Well, I'm hearing different things from, I think, different councilmen, councilmen. Pardon?
You are.
But I'm not sure I can come up with an ordinance that's gonna make a majority of you happy right now.
Tell me, let me, let me withdraw that motion. You draw your second.
I'll withdraw my second.
Now, let's start over again here. Will you kind of slow down a little bit? Okay?
I'm just withdrawing the motion. Might I, might I speak?
Yes, please.
Um, based on what the bonding agent said, I think we're getting the cart before the horse here. I think we need a contract with the hospital before anything, and that's just going to be something that the lawyers are gonna have to draw up because we can't start committing funds and taking out bonds and not having anything to do with them and having to pay the interest on all of this while they sit for two or three years or a couple of years. Uh, you know, the contract, I think, would suffice most of our, of our commitments and the hospital's commitment. And in the contract, there's an incorporation of a timeline, like when the exterior of the hospital is completed, then we'll start the water line because it's gonna take at least, you know, nine to 10 months for them to finish out the inside or a year for that matter. So, I don't see what an ordinance right now, based on what the bonding agent said, that, you know, let's, let's let all of this stuff go, let's try to develop a contract with Allegiance and the city. And maybe somewhere late in 15, we start talking with bonding agents about it because we will have paid off on our existing bonds and we don't have so much to, to borrow.
We need to do something to let Allegiance know that we're going to put a water line out there if they build a hospital. So, what is it gonna take for the city to, to step up to the plate and tell, tell Allegiance, put Allegiance on notice that we're committed to doing it with the, within some parameters and we're gonna list those out, the 1.5 million, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? And, uh, maybe the contract with them, some kind of contractual arrangement is the way to go first?
Would be a resolution?
I think a, a resolution might not be a bad idea, followed by the contract. But you need to make sure before you sign the contract that we've got the commitment of the bond people on board.
Oh, yeah. That's part of the contract.
Not the brightest, but we're not.
And you have to also consider the fact that there's gonna possibly be a shuffling of chairs here in a few days.
Soon.
And this is probably not gonna be wrapped up before that eventuality.
Mr. Mitchell.
I, I think that resolution could possibly satisfy Allegiance's concerns that, are you even interested in a hospital or not? And a resolution from the city would signify that, yes, we're interested in building a hospital, and this is our first step on that lengthy process, is a resolution that, yes, the city would like to have a hospital.
Ms. Snyder.
Okay, so basically, what we're saying is we will resolve to build a sewer line once you have met a contractual obligation and are two-thirds of the way through construction.
You're starting to get into details here. Let's keep it, let's keep it open. And that, yes, we want a hospital.
Yes.
We resolve we want a hospital, we've gotta start building it first?
That's a contract. Contract. Leave those details to the contract. Believe the resolution.
I mean, that's what I'm asking.
The, the contract could be a year from now.
Right. So, what, what I'm saying, so we're gonna do a resolution that says, "Yeah, we want a hospital?"
Right, because they don't know.
It's gonna be a little more fleshed out than that. It has, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna be in reference to them.
Okay.
It's gonna be.
So, we resolve that if they will build it, we will water it.
We'll sewer it.
We'll sewer it, basically, and that's, you know, and that's, and that's right.
Okay, that's what I mean, though, because we have to do more than just say, "Yeah, we want one."
If we can't do it, then you know what? Then we gotta go completely different. It may, may or may not even be available.
So, can you draft a resolution based on what you heard us just saying?
I think I can get close a little bit.
Thank you.
That you can probably agree with that.
So, now we need a motion?
For the next council meeting?
I think so. I, I wanna call the bonding company, but I think so.
See, they, they don't have any idea whether the city says yes or no, and that at least gives them, yeah, we're interested.
Do you need a motion for that resolution or can you just do it?
We need a motion.
If the mayor tells me to do it, or you, or two of you.
We need a motion.
We're making official record.
We're telling you, do it. How's that?
We need a vote on it.
How about ask a little bit?
All right, so.
He said, "Tell."
The motion and who's, who made the second?
Uh, Mr. DeVito made the motion, and I don't see it here a second.
Second.
Thank you.
No further discussion, correct? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
This is on the resolution, right?
The resolution is.
Step one.
All right. Thank you, Lonnie. Do y'all have anything else for Lonnie? He, he needs to go home.
Um, no.
Oh, Lonnie, ignore that.
Mr. Blam, you need a, address.
Call or whatever.
We just, we just wanted to thank you for your time and effort on this hospital, and I did want to introduce Marlene Corner who owns the property out there. Marlene's been a lifetime resident of Eureka Springs and, and.
Been a 50-year-old.
It's a difficult thing to do, but we certainly want to thank all of you for your efforts.
And I'd just like to add, there's a hundred, total of 158 acres out there to get the hospital for a second. Something could be developed and there needs to be a sewer.
Yes.
There we go.
Well, there, there's an interesting point. They have a piece of land, 158 acres, whose value is going to be immeasurably increased if there's a guarantee that there's going to be sewer.
Bye, guys.
So, whether they build a hospital or not, they're, they're increasing the value of their property if they have a guarantee of a sewer out there because they're wanting to have water.
Moves us on to number six, discussion of parking garage.
It's one of our 50-year people.
Uh, that's based on getting a workshop, which Diane is just trying to get a date that we're all on order.
Right, that's what we're going to hold it.
Motion to postpone, second?
Second.
Second.
On the second.
Aye.
All right. Moves us on to number seven, be the second read of ordinance 2214.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Floor is open. Uh, Mr. DeVito.
I move to suspend the rules and place ordinance 2214 on its second reading by title only.
Say, hang on here. Let, and get her along, just back in.
Can, is there a, a comment period here?
Not till we approve it on its second reading. We have to approve it.
What was your question?
Need a drink? Do you need more water?
I don't have any laws interest or anything.
This was a suspension of the rules?
Correct.
Yes.
Wouldn't? Yes.
I have no idea what we're voting on. I couldn't hear.
The second.
I guess.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Mr. Kirkupile.
No.
One more.
I don't know, suspending.
Stand by.
I don't remember.
Order 2214, emergency, without two marks, and ordinance, Stephen, with empty family dwellings in Eureka Springs.
I have to approve ordinance number 2214 on its second reading.
Second.
Now you can discuss.
I always do it backwards. Melissa, would you go up to the mic, please?
Yes.
Okay, we've had several points and questions coming up. Um, I hope Ed got through everything okay today?
He, he did. One, one thing I want to say, and I believe Mr. King is right, we have changed the ordinance number, it's a different ordinance. They have the right to request and we should have a public hearing. So, I'm gonna ask that you table this, we're gonna dot our i's right, planning will have another public hearing, and we will bring it back to you.
Okay. Let me bring up, even though I'll be at the very next planning meeting for some bizarre reason, um, because I asked this at the planning meeting last week, and I kinda got an answer, but I'm still a little confused.
Okay.
Okay, I asked what the reason was in regards to multifamily having to go through this, and I was told it's a safety issue. When you have three or more units and so on and so forth, we need to have our building inspector check it for safety. Now, that is smoke alarm, fire extinguisher, and, uh, secondary exits.
Egress.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But then additional, you know, emergency egress.
Mark, mark exit, yeah, marked exits.
Okay, all of which would take like one minute to check.
Right.
Okay? Now, when I then asked, okay, why is it this not for like duplexes, I was told because invariably with a duplex, the owner lives in one and rents the other, and it's a matter of income and whatever, and the owner will be taking care of himself, they are assuming the owner will be taking care of himself, ergo, the renter of the other side will be covered. Okay? Um, I have a little bit of a problem with that, but that, that was the explanation that I was given. So, my question now is, and another one that's been brought up and in a slightly different way, I, I'm terrible when it comes to lodging. I don't understand the difference between a duplex, a, a three-unit thingy, a whatever. I don't care if it's one family or 20 that are renting, a renter is a renter. To me, that's a business unless it's in a room of your house and then it's to help offset expenses. I understand that part. I don't understand why we aren't having everybody who rents a building, a structure, as opposed to a bedroom or a basement of your house. I don't understand why we are not asking everyone to do the same thing, whether it's a safety issue or the, um, business license issue. I don't understand. To me, renting is renting. Like I said, unless it's in your own house, it's a business. So, somebody's gonna have to really clarify this stuff for me.
You basically answered your own question.
I did?
You were talking about supplemental income, like for the little old lady that lives down the street that wants to rent out her bedroom so that she can make supplemental income. At a point in time, when those units become of an aggregate number where it becomes a business-like endeavor, that's where regulations and fees of running a business, it's, it's one thing for the little old lady to rent out her back bedroom, and it's another thing for a guy to be renting out 10 to 12 units.
Right.
There is, that is more business than just supplemental income for somebody just trying to get by.
Okay, but what I mean is it's one thing to rent a room or a basement of your house, it's another thing to be renting a separate structure, whether it's a garage turned into an apartment or a duplex or a house, renting is renting unless it's in your house. If I rented out my son's bedroom, that would be to help make payments. I mean, see, that's a difference I don't get.
The other question that was brought up in all of this conversation was, well, what if so-and-so has 30 rental units that are single-family? Well, maybe we should look at that person as a business person as opposed to the little old lady down the street who's renting out her back bedroom.
Mr. Mitchell.
Since Mrs. Green, who is on the planning commission, brought up the fact that this ordinance has had a change in number, and the prior ordinance had a public hearing, but this ordinance by this number did not, at this time, I would make a motion that we table this ordinance until, and refer this back to planning to follow the process and then resubmit it to us.
A second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Do you have a?
Take a roll call.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Do you have something to add?
No, I just think that it needs to go back. I, I think since it's been changed, it does, public hearing.
Okay.
Ms. I didn't hear you, right? You said you wanted to postpone.
Yes, yeah. I mean, I, I feel that's by law.
Okay. Okay. Stand by.
Ms. Seller?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. McClan?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Kirkupile?
Yes.
Six, zero.
Okay. Thank you. Moves us on to new business, discussion of rezoning your old high school property.
Move to discuss.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
I have no idea what we're doing with it.
Um.
Uh.
Yeah, isn't.
This, this is, we're on the planning commission.
Oh, we got it last time.
Yes, go ahead.
The process is when it goes through planning and they approve rezoning, the next step is for it to come to council, and this packet was provided for you at the previous meeting with the planning minutes and all that. So, basically, this is a formality to say yea or nay to what planning was recommended.
Okay.
And they recommended approval?
Yes.
Rezoning from R1 to C2H.
Somebody's going.
Okay, I make a motion, do you agree?
I would make a motion to rezon the, uh, high school property from R1 to C2 historic.
Yes.
C2H historic.
C2H is too historic.
No, C2H is different. C2H is a different designation.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
Well, it says C2H here.
It does.
It just hadn't been written into code, but several years ago, they did create the two designations, C2C and C2H, because this portion of C2 that's in the historic district is what's referenced by this. The other C2 is everything that's outside, and so it's C2C.
Ah, okay. Okay. So, motion to approve?
Uh, that was my motion. I think we got a second.
Try it.
I tried to make a second.
I think you need an ordinance.
It's true. We need an ordinance?
That's true. Yeah. I will make a motion to have the city attorney draw up an ordinance reflecting rezoning the old Eureka Springs High School property from R1 to C2H.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion, or? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. Thank you.
Losing.
Okay.
Okay. Moves us on to, oops. Discussion, conflict of interest.
I'd like to postpone that until the next meeting, if possible.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, number three's already postponed.
No, 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 Mr. Mayor. My hands up.
What?
Okay.
Now, wait, what's this in reference to?
Number three, that's what I'm trying to say.
It's already postponed.
Dick is here and says he just wants to make one comment so we can be prepared in two weeks for when Reese is here.
That would be... All in favor of Mr. Titus making comments?
I...
Someone's been posted already.
I absolutely...
So, with his comments, does this open it back up for discussion?
Do we need to discuss anything on what you're gonna say, Dick?
No, I'm talking about with this discussion, it will open this back up from a postponement. It will be an active, live, on-the-floor discussion.
Okay.
Is that correct?
He just wants to give us some info.
Okay.
He'll travel.
Yeah. My name's Dick Titus, 12th White Street. I'm down here to discuss selling the fire station on Main Street and the fire station on White Street. I've been talking to Reese. He's got somewhat of a plan. He just completed the fire station out on 23 South. So, he kinda has an idea of the cost. We have a location. I think the next step is to give him permission to have these properties appraised. At that point, we know if we have the money to build a new station, should we be able to sell these properties for that money? There is interest in both properties. So, you know, they'll have to be put on the market. It's city property. It can't be a handshake deal. But we don't know what they're worth, so we have to have them appraised. And Reese is at a fire, and I called the fire station and laughed, and I said, you know, I'll speak for him. So, all I'm asking is that the funds are released in order to have this appraised, and let's see where we stand. I know the fire department wants a newer building, the one on White Street and the one on Main. They're both difficult to get trucks in and out of. And, you know, if we can raise the money by selling these properties, and they can get a new station, and I think everybody will be happy.
Questions?
Any questions?
So, what do we do to start the process?
I think we need Reese here before we start any process.
All we want right now is the approval to get them appraised. That's what Reese needs.
With all due respects to Mr. Titus, I wanna hear that from the chief.
Okay. I mean...
Whatever.
Okay. It's not a whatever. It's a decision of the council. So, all in favor of waiting and having...
That ends up...
All in favor of waiting and having the chief, fire chief here for this, so it'll be another postponement, so we can just say postpone and have the chief here?
Or approving an appraisal, is that what you're asking?
That is the motion.
You didn't say anything about appraisal. We're not putting any money out for any appraisal yet.
I didn't know we had to.
Okay. Unless there's a previous motion to supersede Mr. DeVito's, who asked that the chief be here, then he is the only live motion on the table.
Second. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
I'm so confused.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
At least now we know what's coming down the pipe.
Okay, so it is a repostone. Okay.
Oh, God.
Takes us into agenda setting. Mr. DeVito.
Nothing here.
Mr. McClan.
No, sir.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, sir. I'd like to have, and I don't know how to handle this for sure, I'd like to see some status updates on clean city ordinance, noise ordinance, city computer system, and water leaks. And that could either be through you, the mayor, as the...
What do you mean, a status update?
A status update is how is this clean city ordinance going? What about the buildings that were identified for demolition by neglect? Where are they in the process? Noise ordinance? Oh. It'll be a mid-year.
No, but we need...
And we needed the mid-year, too. Yes, sir. So, it would be a status update on clean city ordinance, where it's at since it's been passed. The noise ordinance, how is it going? Again, these could come to you from your department heads, and you could mention it, or it would be nice if they'd stop by and kinda tell us how these things that we have passed are doing. The computer system, how is it going with the new city computer system? Did it finally make it totally up? Dwayne, the water leaks of the water meters, where are we at in that process? And also, then we would need a mid-year review financial. And so, if we could just kind of get a a review of where we're at, we're getting ready to wind up this council on the end of this year, and it would be kinda nice to know if there's any loose ends and if some of the work we did was any good.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes, sir. I have two. Bruce Levine has asked me to put on two resolutions that he has for parks. One is a resolution for cost share for maintenance and repair items at Leatherwood Lake area. The other resolution is for parks granting an easement to the state because the state is going to grant funds to repair their office.
An easement?
An easement, perpetual easement, to be able to come on to the site and this.
Yeah.
I provided that information
To resolution for what?
To the city clerk.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all, sir.
Ms. Snyder?
Yeah, discussion, a furthering discussion of fluoride, please. Oh, and that's it.
Can we go back and give a second on David's five and these two?
Second. Oh, second.
Second to Mr. Mitchell's?
Second, I'll second these.
Okay, slow down a minute. All right, let me take care of this. Mr. Mitchell needs a second.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Perkypile needs a second.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Snyder needs a second.
Second.
Ms. Zeller?
I've had to sleep here.
All right, slow down. Ms. Zeller, it's your turn. Do you have anything for the agenda? Ms. Zeller, do you have anything for the next agenda?
No.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I neglected an item.
Sort of zoned out here.
Discussion of a temporary loading, a 15-minute loading zone, 30 minutes? I think it was 30.
I thought it was...
Behind the auditorium, so that they can load in and load out equipment. I'll leave the time to be determined, but we needed discussion of that. They're having some problems with...
Behind the auditorium, okay.
With loading in and loading out and getting ticketed.
All right, moves to council comments. Mr. DeVito?
No comment.
Did we get a second on Mr. DeVito's?
I'm sorry.
Yeah. I got a second.
Can I go home now?
Mr. McClan, council comments?
No, sir.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
It's a rather quiet tonight, but what I will say is, I wanna, you know, in all this discussion about, you know, building sewer lines out to a hospital that may or may not be built, one thing that we do have that we need to not forget about is the repair of Black Bass Lake Dam, because that is our water supply, folks, and we really need to bring that back up again. Osage Group, Osage Hall is trying to help us out with a mitigation plan to get some federal funding, possibly, to address that. I just don't want it to disappear under the radar. That's all.
Ms. Snyder?
I'd like to welcome home my little Marine. He will be in first thing in the morning. He's somewhere between Amarillo and Oklahoma City right now. And I want to send out early congratulations to my oldest son, Tracy, who's actually finally getting married Saturday. Yes!